So we are, you can hear me now. Alright, so we call the October 28th of Princeton City Council Awards.
Councilor Sykes. Councilor Hopkins.
Present.
Councilor Vargas.
Present.
Councilor Pauli.
Present.
Councilor Bowden.
Present.
Councilor Brady.
Present.
Councilor Ablosis.
Here.
Councilor Reddick.
Present.
Present. So if you'd please rise and like to have a couple of questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in the first place.
With that, we have two big acknowledgements and commendations to the 2019 Princeton Cross Country City Champions. And while he's doing that to the police and firemen for being happy to be on your truck here, I apologize for violating the fire code. We're under personal limits, so try to hit some of these citations and then I'll...
Yeah, we have a bunch of, a bunch of teams on our hearing, cross-country related. I was hoping they'd have the longtime fortunate friend Nicole Ransili up here helping. I was fortunate enough to... I was fortunate enough to go to high school with Nicole and she was a standout athlete, cross-country runner herself. She motivated me to go out every day, so I know the passion and enthusiastic attitude she brings to city, here in Europe. So great job Nicole, first one is actually to you. You and Councilmember Vargas can hand out the rest as we go. Is this... This person's team is winning the middle school girls' cross-country team city championship. Giovanna Van Helden. This, uh, this is the next award is for the boys' perfect W team for winning the city championship also. You want to take a picture of this number also? Next name is Brandon Smith. Councilor Austin has some individual city champions awards, would you like to present that down also on the road here? Cross-country team is winning individual city championship. The entire council, some serious congratulations to Patrick McDonald. City team, Patrick McDonald again. City team, Jack Lorenz. City team boys, Dr. James J. Green. Okay, boys, for all city girls and individual winners. City girls, Amy Zane. Congratulations, young coach from Western Mills, come up here with the last symbol. As I call it, please come up, Kevin Gillen. Thank you so much, gentlemen and ladies, and I'm going to congratulate you once again. We appreciate you all coming out there and congratulating.
I'm gonna take a five-minute recess before I leave these two. Thank you for allowing the, uh, the crowd to leave soon. Next, we have a proclamation, October 28th, 2019, Make Epilepsy History Day.
Hello, my name is Mary School. I'm 14 years old. I live in Princeton, in a residential firm in Princeton. I go to school at Mary Street Christian Academy, and I'm living with an epilepsy condition called epilepsy. I was 10 years old when I got diagnosed with epilepsy, and doctors were saying I'm crazy. When I came back to school after I got diagnosed, it was really difficult to get the work finished in class because I had seizures. And teachers wouldn't even notice. And if they don't notice, they don't know to go with a blessing. And not getting it worked on really affected my grades. This is why I feel it is, it is very important to have education about epilepsy in schools, not just for the nurses and teachers, but students also. So for example, if someone has a seizure in class or hallway, the students need to know how to handle the situation. As a teen living with epilepsy, I feel it makes me safer that people know about my epilepsy, so they know what to do if they are near me and I have seizures. As you may know, the average class size is about 26 students. However, something you may not have known is that 126 people have epilepsy, and 110 people have seizures in their lifetime. In actuality, 11,000 people know that I'm living with epilepsy. Now, even though I have epilepsy, it doesn't help without advocates for people to learn about epilepsy. As a random teen advocate for epilepsy in Princeton last spring, I went to Washington CDC with teens from other US schools to learn more about epilepsy and to talk to the federal legislators and ask for $12.5 million dollars from CDC to do research. We got it. Tonight, I am here for two reasons. One, to ask for an epilepsy awareness day in Princeton, and two, to ask that all nurses, teachers, and students in Princeton schools get educated about epilepsy. Thank you for your time and I hope this speech has been helpful.
So I have some news for you. I have a proclamation I want to make. Proclamation, October 28th, 2019, as Make Epilepsy History Day. Be resolved, whereas Make Epilepsy History Day is an effort of the Epilepsy Foundation in New England to raise awareness above and change the conversation around epilepsy and seizures to engage everyone in the fight to make epilepsy history, as well as to improve and save the lives with care, advocacy, research, and new therapies and education. And whereas epilepsy is a disorder of the brain characterized by recurrent and uncontrolled seizures that can affect anyone at any age at any time, whereas approximately 3.4 million people in the USA and 14,000 people around me live with epilepsy and seizure. Whereas, while many treatments are approved to treat seizures, 30 to 40% with epilepsy still live with uncontrolled seizures despite multiple treatment trials. And whereas epilepsy can affect anyone at any time, whereas acting together on Make Epilepsy History Day during other awareness initiatives, including International Epilepsy Day, National Epilepsy Awareness Week, Brain Awareness Week, any other day of the year, we must increase public knowledge about epilepsy and seizure first aid and change the way people think about epilepsy and seizures. Now therefore, we hereby proclaim, October 28th, 2019, Make Epilepsy History Day. We urge all Princeton residents to take action together and make epilepsy history. We hereby send our sentences into seal, October 28th, 2019, signed by Mary Ann Fung, Council President, Monique Corina, and the rest of the Princeton City Council. And for our head of verse, we have a citation for you on behalf of the Princeton City Council. Verse is spoken very true words, epilepsy can affect anyone at any age. Uh, my father, last year, was working that frontline job at Princeton Library, uh, he slipped and fell with his head. And when the fire tried to save him, they assumed that, you know, he's an older man and probably just had a mission fell off his head. Uh, when he went through neurology, he found out that he had epilepsy. He had a random seizure that day in the library. So then about six weeks to figure out that he had epilepsy, he probably had it for a long time, he was living with minor seizures, minor issues for years until they realized. So mercy, you are correct, it can affect anyone at any age. Thank you for being here tonight, thank you for having us. Public hearing, this section of the meeting is open to any comments on adopted matters. Name and address to remember.
Council President, who is Councilor John Devona, president of the office of home. Or anyone out with Adam in Princeton, I'm here on the, uh, the Chase project.
Just by the way, that's my dad in the library.
I thought it was the Mardinis that did it.
I'll be brief, Mr. Council President, you weren't here at the ordinance committees, I just want to go over a few things about the issues that you have on the project. I'm representing Oakland Development LLC, Nancy, the captain of its principals, again with regard to the Chase Bank proposal, 175 out of Adam. As you know, there was a presentation before the public works ordinance committees on October 17th, uh, before the public works committee was a resolution for the abandonment of block street. Uh, as was mentioned at that meeting, uh, requirement of the city is when you propose to abandon the street, you have to get the street appraised by an appraiser on the city's list. We did that with Pierre Scotty, uh, the district ordinance and the others are granted, uh, the city will receive a payment, uh, based upon the appraisers, $194,500. In addition, here for zone change of B1 to C3 for the properties that make up the, would make up the Chase Bank. And also, there's a comprehensive plan amendment for some of those lots. Uh, if all of these are approved, uh, there will be an administrative subdivision, a merge of the lots in question, we're asking for approval this evening. Uh, and Alan Roxhill of Four States Group, who's engineering the project, also has been to the landscape plan at the meeting. The traffic was an issue, uh, the traffic engineers from the command, transportation, these from Adams here, there's already questions we have to answer those, we have plans here. Again, we're asking for your approval of the resolution of the, uh, road abandonment and the two zone changes.
And also, the politics speak, I need to have the rest of you.
Evening, international. Thank you, this is President, members of the council, good evening. John Gatsian, behalf of BC Store LLC, and as attorney, also the 56th High School in Robbins. I'm here to speak in respect to Title 8-19-06. It's a petition filed by a petitioner, which we expect to amend the existing ordinance which created at 950 Kings Avenue, a mixed-use development. Uh, this project has been part of a process, uh, that has been phased with commercial building, self-sourced building. And we're here this evening on the final phase of the project, which is the destruction of commercial units, uh, as part of the end use of this ultimate project. We received planning board approval, we also received government planning commission review approval before the ordinance committee, and had the ordinance committee review this project as well. Uh, I'm available as our engineers, PhD are available, should any council members have any questions or concern about, about the project. The ordinance quickly, essentially does three things. It essentially clarifies the existing sizes of the buildings on site now, given the total performance of what has been built. It secondly addresses the uses. It secondly addresses the uses. It does so with clarity. Past ordinance did have some issues with respect to what the uses were and how they were being permitted. And that is why we've come to fruition. And it also eliminates any issue with respect to signage. We're not proposing any signage. Essentially puts an end to that. This is our final phase, final development. And we have no intention of coming back other than a regular cutting ceremony. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Attorney General. And would the public wish to speak on any document?
Hi, good evening. Robert Wilson, 114 Mayflower Drive. I'm just here for the document matter under Councilmember Communications, under Councilman Breed. So do you have any status and noise measurement issues? As possibly, we'd like to respectfully request if we possibly discuss that now. If not, we can wait.
Any objections to the matter, Councilor? I see no objection. Perfect, we're all prepared.
A couple of updates. The yard works were slated as usual for to comply with third violation of the temporary structure on their property. I knew there was a $2,400 fine that they were slated for. And there's a court order put in place that they can no longer put any additional structures on that property. That's one part of it. Also, we did have a noise monitoring company submit to the city to report on their findings. And we have said it. We have also for a noise violation under the noise ordinance. And Mr. Decatur is supposed to, but Decatur is still pursuing the process of superior court.
Councilman Devota, question?
I do, um, we can consult the board. See, and I was wondering, is there any way to have access to the noise measurement? The noise theory I guess study that? Okay, that's something that is public information, then?
I would say it's public information, but okay, it's the council. Certainly presented as evidence at trial, this report. So I wouldn't say it's totally, but I can give it to the council right now.
So it's something that Mr. Wilson and Labor and Energy that have a?
I would say, no, not until it's very cross, but I don't know.
And in front of Mr. Wilson?
I just wanted to also say thank you again very much to the council, to the administration for taking the time to listen to us and be receptive to what we have to say and to take finished decimal testing and everything else. And is also, as far as taking the matter further into court. We're grateful for that. And I want to say thank you as well to everyone. And we look forward to being contacted shortly in any way that we could help about that as well. So, thank you all very much. And it's the next conference, I suppose. Thank you, how good I am.
You too, Mr. Wilson. And would the public speak on any matter? Seeing none, that section of the meeting is now closed. Moving on to the resolution this evening. We're going to report from any finance committee, Councilway President.
Thank you, Council President. Finance Committee, net with regards to initially nine-19-04. Ordinance ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining agreement with the Royal Laborers District, Council 1322, trade people, unit July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2020 contract. Introduce pursuit to child assessment 11.0 or 2.1. This passed the committee, I have heard, passage here.
Is there a motion approved?
Motion approved.
Second, a motion of second under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
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 Next, we had a resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements passed unanimously. Committee had its passage here.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll. Approve the resolution authorizing real estate abatements.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Pauling?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Brady?
Yes.
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 Next, we had a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements. Those passed unanimously as well, had their passage here.
Motion approved. A motion of second?
Second.
A motion of second under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll of the motor vehicle taxes.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we had the tax interest waiver approvals passed unanimously.
Is there a motion approved?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll of the tax insurance rules.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And I believe I skipped the tangible tax abatements.
Is there a motion approved?
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion of second under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll of the motor vehicle taxes.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And then we, next we had the tax interest waiver denials also passed unanimously.
Motion approved.
Second.
Now, a motion of second under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll of the tax insurance denials.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we had a tax assessment order review decisions as of December 31, 2017. Director Strom to report on the property's own, sir.
Thank you. This represents twenty-seven houses, all paying the lots. It was assessed by a tax assessor. The certain company monitored or appealed. It went before the Board of Tax Assessor to review. The board decided to reduce the value by about twenty percent based upon comparable sales. And so, that's why there's a reduction. But the board of assessment review that decided is based on the customer.
Councilor Stiles?
Was the assessment done by vision appraisal or by the tax assessor?
Well, it's done through the jurisdiction of the tax assessor in the information that the visionary established.
I guess my question is, they were assessed like all other projects in the same manner as others?
They decided to appeal it to the board.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you for your explanation. Public Works Committee, we're holding a resolution about the drive to abandon of Block Street. We get the two ordinances. You only have the Chase Bank, you have the Board once. So, we're going out of the ordinance committee, Councilway President, we have a question.
Do you want to go out of order? We didn't watch you, or just go?
We'll just do the two that don't relate to Chase. And once we get there, we'll watch. Thank you all for your input.
Because I will skip, we had two prior to the lodge. I'll skip those.
No, you can.
Okay, I'll do it then. First, now, we heard eight-19-04. Ordinance in amendment of Title 10, Chapter 32.570, Court of the City of Cranston, 2005. Title Motor Vehicle was in traffic, Kenwood. Two-hour parking, sponsored by Councilmember Donigan, co-sponsored by Councilmember McCauley. This passed, I believe, as it's up to the traffic report that company.
All of that motion approved?
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion of second under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we had seven-19-03. Ordinance in amendment of Chapter 15.12, Court of the City of Cranston, 2005. Title Housing Standards Creating the Cranston News and Pass Force, sponsored by Councilman Vargas and then all of everyone other members showing in. It was amended and passed in committee, had its passage here.
Motion approved. And motion approved. Second?
Second.
Under discussion. Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilor Stiles?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I'll look back to the resolution authorizing abandonment of Block Street. Council, very likely, perhaps, clearly, the closest.
Yes, I believe this, Council President, as you guys know, the community and we accuse myself of my real terms of business relationship with the developers. So I'm very much in question. I may accuse myself of the words.
So for the record, for our Councilmember Vargas to accuse himself of the Block Street abandonment, ordinance pending at seven-19-4, seven-19-5.
Are we sticking with the ordinance now?
We'll stick with Public Works, who chaired that, my absence. Councilman Hopkins, do you have a comment? If you want to talk about that resolution, always want to override the abandonment of Block Street.
Thank you, President. Yes, the resolution passed in committee.
Resolution to abandon Block Street, back end? Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion of second under discussion of the abandonment? Councilway President, we have a question.
Yes, thank you, Council President. One of the issues that came up was the purchase price that's attached to this abandonment. I believe it's $194,000, which represents, after some research, it represents about twelve years' worth of taxes that would have been paid on all of the properties involved in that section. So, $194,500. So we are getting a substantial amount upfront just for the value of the street abandonment, which equates to twelve years' worth of taxes for the entire property.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Stiles, would you turn your hand up?
Yes, at the committee hearing, I raised the issue of the bank putting solar panels on the roof. They were willing to agree to that. I wonder if that was discussed.
Do you want to ask now, you know, with the ordinance?
Oh, I was going to ask now.
For the chance, for the developer, Councilor Stiles has requested the ordinance committee that solar panels be on the roof. That's under discussion.
No, that is not.
Councilor Stiles, you have a question?
All right, in that case, I'll offer an amendment to the abandonment ordinance. Adding on line 49, the amendment would say, "The petitioner shall also install enough solar panels on any newly constructed building on the property or adjacent property to generate the building's annual electricity usage."
Second, have a motion, and a second. Councilmember Hopkins?
Thank you, President. Believe me, I'm not opposed to solar panels. And I would like to see them installed throughout the city if they're done properly. And I think it's a good idea. But in this case, I think we're getting into a dangerous territory when we get a company that's willing to come in and take an abandoned property that's been vacant for God knows how many years. And they're going to spend millions of dollars to fix it up. And then to ask them to put some solar panels on the roof after they've done all their work, I just think is not good for this particular project.
Councilor Brady, Councilmember, and Councilmember Hopkins?
Although I also agree with the statement of Councilman Stiles, I agree with Councilman Hopkins. I think, you know, we're asking a company to come in and invest $4 million plus into the project in, you know, an area. First of all, I'm not sure it's legal. I guess we'd have to ask the attorneys. But obviously, there should be initiatives to encourage businesses to use solar energy for the environment. I just don't think we should require any business coming to the city to do so.
Councilway President?
Thank you, Council President. I looked in, and I looked at this subsequent to the hearing as well. And one of the things is that there's no science behind even requesting this, even if it were legal. I don't believe that we have the authority to impose this restriction on one developer. I don't think we can impose it on anyone else. But the science doesn't match up. And I know our planning department has a lot of information on this. But we have, I would say, maybe 20,000 to 25,000 structures in the entire city. And even if you put solar panels on every one of our structures, you'd be about 50,000 sure of powering the whole city up with solar power. So there's just no science and math behind it to back it up. It's a great goal. It's something that I think we should do. But as I said in committee, as the technology gets better, then you may be able to, you know, create smaller solar panels that generate far more electricity. And until there, that's done and it's affordable, I don't see how we can impose that kind of a restriction. And especially on a small building like this. I'm told that, you know, when you're, if you don't have 50,000 square feet of panel, you're not generating a heck of a lot of electricity. So I just think that it's wrong on a number of counts. Especially the fact that I don't think we have the authority to even impose it. So I would oppose the amendment. I think tax incentives for technological advancement are the way to generate new forms of renewable energy, not trying to dictate that, you know, an existing business or a new business try to do it while the building, their structure.
Councilor? I would, two parts. First, I think that going forward, this is something that we should look after all in construction. When the city, we're going to seriously start to take on climate change. We need to start to look at these big initiatives. And this is, these are the kind of big changes that we need to come from and take on. But not to put the Mr. Chris Baum or Mr. Reddity on the spot. Do you have a legal opinion on the legality of this amendment?
Just, you know, for, so through the chain after the listener, can we, when an ordinance requires that someone do something, not related to?
No.
That was pretty fast, no? Now, you may, again, I know I'm putting you on the spot. But is your opinion on that because this is, you know, a one-all instance? Or would that be, do you feel that would be the same going forward if it was codified into, you know, code that new construction going forward had to?
I think it has to be codified. I think there has to be some kind of reason why we're signaling out Chase Bank for solar panels versus any other, all that kind of thing. And I don't think it should be a requirement. It's not a requirement for abandonment which is what this particular amendment sees modified. So it's really not even rational related to what the developer's trying to do for a lot of reasons. I'll stick with that.
I appreciate that.
Councilman Stiles, your follow-up?
Yeah, well, I think that this corporation is one of the wealthiest corporations in the world. So they can certainly afford to put solar panels on the roof of a branch office in Cranston, Colorado. It's not going to really bother them at all. The second thing is that I think we have the right, this is our property, and we have the right to sell it for what we want to sell for. I mean, we have to, under the law, we have to do an appraisal. I mean, we have to, under the law, we have to give an appraisal, and we have to get at least the appraised value, but the reason I'm attempting to attach this amendment to this section is because this is ours, this is something we're selling, and I think the price that we should sell this for is the one hundred and ninety thousand plus the requirement that there be solar panels on the roof. I think we have to take steps like this, or the alternatives are these massive solar farms that I think most of us realize are, are a mistake in our city, and, or agreeing that we're just going to destroy the planet and our grandchildren are going to be in a hell of a mess. So it's a very small step, I know that, but I think we do have the right to set a price on our, on something we're selling, and there should be part of the price.
Councilmember Kavaskis.
Thank you, Council President. I understand Councilmember Steyko's concerns for the planet. I don't know if we should do this on a single basis, Steve. I think we're better off coming up with something, like you said, that'll avoid the big solar farms and work on something that will make the city of Cranston a better, friendlier, eco place to live. I think we have to sit down and really work on some kind of resolution or ordinance to come up with something. I don't think now is the time to single out one individual company to, to name it, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Don, you have a follow-up, Councilmember.
Given Mr. Kirshenbaum's opinion, I'm going to vote against the amendment, not because I'm against the idea, but because of the legal opinion. With that said, I think this, this is something that we should do going forward, and I know the planning director is in the room, and I'd love to work together, Councilman Steyko and, and Mr. Kirshenbaum, to try and codify this idea into, into code going forward, so we can start to take on some of these challenges.
Look, I mean, if this is a priority for the city, there are a number of ways that the city can do this legally, and not just based upon how much money someone receives someone has. It's always fun to spend other people's money, but we can't do that in this country, not yet at least. But what I propose is, maybe do a tax incentive program, maybe we could do some kind of incentive program based upon a green incentive program, we have a job incentive, we have a building incentive. I don't think it would be wrong to do some kind of incentive program like that to make people want to do that naturally.
Councilman Brady.
I would agree with Mr. Kirshenbaum's point, and the discussion should be in a taxing center to encourage businesses to go solar, because I also, like Councilman Steyko's, don't necessarily agree that we should be building farms and residential. However, like we said in committee, watching this particular space be vacant for twenty-five plus years, I don't think it's necessarily fair to single them out and require that, and I also think it sets a precedent to other businesses that might want to come to Cranston and that we're not the easiest to deal with, which I'm not sure, you know, we want to start to set. That being said, I appreciate the conversation, and, you know, I think that, you know, we can definitely work around an incentive to maybe consider Cranston a little more green and to encourage it, but, you know, I, like I said, a committee applaud this business for coming into the city of Cranston, spending four plus million dollars cleaning up an area, buying six plus properties, and I know how hard this deal was to put together, so, you know, I encourage it, I look forward to this bank coming to our city, I thank them for their investment.
Further discussion? Yes, Council President.
Just very quickly, yeah, I, I certainly, as I said, I certainly favor tax incentive methods of obtaining some technological advancement and projects like this, but I think we should listen to the science, and I think our planning department has a lot of knowledge with regard to this, so the feasibility is an issue. I just want everyone to understand that. If you talk to planning, you'll learn pretty quickly that the technology hasn't arrived where it's going to be that simple, so I think we need to listen to them as well before we make any decisions.
Before we get back to Councilmembers, if everyone's open wants to, Councilman Don, you presented before, and Councilman Steyko, I do agree that we should think of conscientious uses of solar, which our companies in the city should work together elaborately to find spots where we could potentially go, but I will sit here and tell you now, the only person who's really qualified inside, if solar rays are going on top of the building, if the director of planning, he is trained to understand what's going on top of the roof, what can go on top of the roof, what the exact system will look like, how to integrate with the operations of the building, and to sit here and change the laws before someone puts a solar plant on top of the roof, which way not reasonable for it, doesn't make the best sense. I think if we think that's something the city wants to do, we should work with the planning department to develop ordinances that say, depending on the size of your building, the scope of your build-out, the roof apparatus going on your building, you need to think about putting in solar, and here's the incentive we're going in here for doing that. I think it's a, it's a good piece of legislation to just put it in an abandonment, it just doesn't seem like it's the right. Councilmember Steyko.
Yes, in light of the cartel, kind of, type of trouble, I think.
Yeah, there's no problem. Further discussion of the abandonment of Washington?
Councilman Don. Thank you. Still getting used to having a, a, something like that. Councilman Steyko was brought up in the committee, the fact that they're, we are going to be losing, of course, willingly there are some of their homes, we are losing some, some units. I don't know if anyone else on the council has had a chance to read through the housing works, or, in fact, what they had to put out late last week, but according to their statistics, the annual income needed to affordly purchase a median-priced home in Cranston is seventy-eight thousand dollars, and the median household in, in Cranston, I think, is sixty-four thousand. So losing housing units is a significant issue, and I'm wondering if the kid, if this body has any willingness to earmark some of the money that we're going to receive through the abandonment towards something like the C-Cabinetry Assistance Program, or in the Community Development Department there, I believe they have some funds for purchasing properties to develop for, for a thousand. So I guess I would, I would make the motion to amend the resolution on line forty-nine to earmark the, the proceeds from this abandonment to the C-Cabinetry Assistance Program.
Yeah, I don't believe we can earmark proceeds from the sale of this property. Director Burrow, Director Strong, all the attorneys, I want to, I'm not sure we can direct, I think we can pass a budget amendment to take funds that we can find, but I'm not sure we can earmark. We're not here for that. I think I'm favored about what you're going to do, it's, there's no reason we can't do the, the other law of solar, we're sure we can just dictate what the funds go on the sale of property.
That's correct. It has to be during the budget process. You can't just earmark, like, because you're just seeing those.
Yes, we have to pass some kind of resolution or amend budget in some way that allows funds to be put into a different category.
I'm sorry, but I, I don't agree with this.
I know you don't. I know that this resolution doesn't break, we're just trying to establish this, the wrong way to do it.
As the, as Mr. Kirshenbaum mentioned, it's still going to be, how about balance sheet as an asset to the city.
People's equity sheet, I think, definitely.
Because of basically the push.
Yes, because we're changing the natural capital, right. Councilmember Brady.
I certainly understand we don't give that, but also, John, I want to say that's a good point. Showing the median income is fourteen dollars plus, shows that we obviously have, that's something else we have to work on, the city of Cranston is finding more footfalls, and I don't necessarily agree that it's here, this developer, who's given these properties probably all over their assets and prices, and, 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 and probably pretty happy, but that being said, you do raise a good point, but I don't want to argue with you on that.
Thank you. Councilman Steyko.
Just, I'm not sure about this, but maybe something that Mr. Strong either knows or could check. I believe when we sell a property, that the proceeds have to go to retire and death. Is that familiar?
I think there's a couple of categories of consequence. You can't do that as well as, like, based on debt service, but you don't have to do that as long as you're making compounding on that service. But that is really something possible to do. I would much rather see something like that, than putting it into a, an account that's topical for one type of category.
Do you feel, President, that we consider both, both, and a visual analysis of Washington? Senior members, please take a vote.
Councilor Steyko?
Yes.
Councilor Rappus?
Yes.
Councilor Vargas?
Yes.
Councilor Pauli?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor Brady?
Yes.
Councilor Michael McKeon?
Yes.
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 Back to the ordinance, the ordinances. Seven dash nineteen dash zero four, ordinance amending the comprehensive plan in two thousand and ten, March Atwood Chase Bank, petition filed by Oakmont Development LLC. This passed in committee, and I urge passage here.
Motion approved. Second. Motion, second, on discussion. Senior members, please take a vote.
Councilor Steyko?
Yes.
Councilor Rappus?
Yes.
Councilor Vargas?
Yes.
Councilor Pauli?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor Brady?
Yes.
Councilor, Councilor McKeon?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have seven dash nineteen dash zero five, ordinance amendment of chapter seventeen, code of the city of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled zoning, change of zone, March Atwood Chase Bank, petition filed by Oakmont Development LLC. This also passed in committee, and I urge passage here.
Motion approved, motion, second, and motion, second, on discussion. Senior members, please take a vote. Oops, sorry, Councilway President.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, we, we had a very lengthy meeting, uh, ordinance on this, and I want to thank the, the developer and all the experts that appeared and gave us a very extensive plan of what's going, going to happen there. I think it's a very good project, I think it's going to create some buffer for the, for the other residences that are there, and I think it's, you know, it's a win-win for the city. It's going to create not only twelve years of income upfront from the taxes, but it's going to create a tax base, commercial tax base. One of the things that didn't come out in the committee, and I think Councilman Steyko asked the question, excuse me, this property will also be taxed at the commercial rate rather than the residential rate, so it's already ten dollars per thousand higher, and it's going to be, obviously, substantially more in value than I think the, the five houses that are there, if you want to say that.
Thank you, Councilway President. Further discussion? Senior members, please take a vote.
Councilor Steyko?
Yes.
Councilor Rappus?
Yes.
Councilor Rappus, yes.
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor Brady?
Yes.
Councilor McKeon?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
There's a cast. Next, we have eight dash nineteen dash zero six, ordinance amendment of chapter seventeen, code of the city of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled zoning nine fifty Phoenix Avenue Commercial Use, petition filed by BCPF Store Development LLC, passed in committee, urge passage here.
Motion approved, second, and motion, second, in discussion. Senior members, please take a vote.
Councilor Steyko?
Yes.
Councilor Rappus?
Yes.
Councilor Vargas?
Yes.
Councilor Pauli?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. As a scriptist error, the law was passed, special community, it's a error, it's a rule one nine dash nineteen.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance amendment of title ten point three-two, code of the city of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled loan vehicles and traffic, Puritan and Standard Streets, three-way stop, sponsored by Councilmember Donigan. Passed in committee.
Motion approved, second, on discussion. Senior members, please take a vote.
I just wanted to agree with your grasp, right? I think you came up pretty well.
We'll just finish this one up here. And motion approved, second, on discussion, senior members, please take a vote.
Councilor Steyko?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Pauli?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor Brady?
Yes.
Councilor McKeon?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. These are claims, I'm set on claims, ladies, you just have to wait, Council, the chairman will call.
Informational purposes only, sir.
Thank you. Public hearings, over to any matter coming forward, city, it's the public's chance to give a second here. Go for the call tonight. Okay, motion, please, now, votes. Legend City officials, all we form on that we are putting, term expires by May twenty-four, received a request that, is the form, the, the reported, so back forth, square, okay, motion approved.
Motion approved.
Back and, and motion, second, on discussion. Senior members, please take a vote.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor Rappus?
Yes.
Councilor Vargas?
Yes.
Councilor Pauli?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor Brady?
Yes.
Councilor McKeon?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Report of City Officers. Status of slash mandate, what, the director of reporting, or, 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 I suppose the director of reporting, and at this time, he does not believe that his suitable location would be for that slash pact, so that needs some work, and to identify, uh, who you want to push that. So I would ask, Councilman Don, if you could contact director of reporting, the location that you, you have a warrant, it's yours.
Yeah, thank you, but that's, I'm going to be completely honest, I'm a bit surprised by that. I had different, different takeaways from numerous conversations with the director of reporting on this.
That was my conversation with him today, and that's a while. I'll have to change, because you mean what you're spoken to, you know, for, so. I'll follow tomorrow with you.
All right, thank you.
First of all, the commission, those of you who know, so, the first commission, they've been about four times as part of that resolution, there is an update to come, the first one is this October, so we have this evening, the chairman of that committee, Susan Raisin, and the co-chair, David. And this evening, and thank you for working on the first commission, I know there's been a lot of good comments.
Good evening, Council President, for your members of the council. David and I have presented an initial report, which was sent to the docket, so hopefully you had a chance to review the initial findings of the commission. The report contains, you know, some initial preliminary work results to this point, which I think has been very successful. Rather than repeat the contents of the report, at this point, David and I will be happy to address any questions you have, or provide verification on any of the individual items that were contained in the report.
Over to any questions, people not on the commission, versus the, not myself, Councilmember Hopkins, or Councilmember Vargas, as we're there, that's what we'll be, so any members who are not on the first commission, which should ask questions to the chairman. Council, Councilmember Don.
Thank you, Council President, Director. I just want to thank, thank both of you for the hard work and effort you're putting into this commission. I'm already hearing great results. I did review your report, and I commend it, and I, I will be supporting it in any way possible in the future. I apologize, I haven't made a meeting myself yet, I will do that in the near future, it's been a bit hectic, as of late.
You're welcome to come.
Well, I thank you. Well, I thank you.
Is every member of the council signed up for the university training on November fifth? Seth, thank you, Council President. You should have received an email from Director Cox, yes, from the library regarding the ability for the council members to take the diversity training, if they want some training, we'll be forward as well as that, uh, if that's something you'd like to do, and have not received that email, please let Director Cox know. See, I'm actually, Councilor Sykes, so I'm assuming you don't know about it.
So if we need to sign up to?
Yes, need to head count for the, uh, for the event to come in here, coming in and have to prepare for, it's an all-day event, things like that, so if you, if you want to go and you haven't, tell them I recommend shooting in a quick email tonight or tomorrow morning, to let them know that you will be attending. Councilor Sykes?
Yeah, a question on the report. It says that there's an announcement by Mayor Hung, and he has recommended changing the EMT cardiac license requirement from a pre-employment requirement to a post-employment requirement for the next firefighter improvement. Could you explain that a little bit, how that's going to work?
Sure, this was a very, um, well, it was a very contentious issue, generally, the lack of date at some of the, um, commission meetings. Basically, the way the city of Cranston, uh, runs the application process, uh, an applicant must possess the EMT cardiac license when they hire. They must have that, um, training and testing completed. Other municipalities, we have learned, don't require the applicant to possess that, um, license when they apply, rather, after they're hired, they're given a certain period of time, or six months or year, to, uh, to obtain that certification. So after a lot of debate, research, and collaboration, I think the mayor, um, recognized that perhaps it is a barrier to, um, some people applying, and he, again, he's recommending that that be changed, but probably the next firefighter improvement will be after his term ends, so it's a recommendation from the mayor at this point.
Hi, Mayor. It's really an actual barrier as well, because the training itself is about two thousand dollars, so, you know, for minority community, people on ice rooms, that becomes a real barrier. Although there is a loan program, it's better, and it's done after, as far as we have the nerve.
Well, um, couldn't that just be done with a personnel rule, um, that could be, that we could consider now, rather than waiting for the next improvement?
We haven't, um, discussed that as a means of accomplishing that, that goal, but perhaps after the way to accomplish the same goal.
Okay, well, I, yeah, I'd be interested in, in the committee's opinion on that, and did you look at, had, did the mayor at all look at, uh, is that going to be a conditional cost for the city, or how will that work?
It's going to, uh, clearly, post, uh, post-hire, so once the firefighter, uh, the kind of firefighter, eventually they add, you have twelve months to obtain that license, uh, at their own time, so the city, they're going towards the training, uh, it hasn't, it hasn't been determined yet whether the firefighter themselves will pay for that, that two thousand dollars for the city to pay, or detail that more to go here.
When, when this has come up in the past, the statement was made that, that that would create a lot of overtime, because, and that that would be a cost for the city, is that?
We decided that that has to be accomplished on their own time, it's not going to be long in the work, but we got the back full in, they have to accomplish that certification on their own time, on their own, so it does not affect the forty-one and minimum requirement, so of course the city can't do overtime, and they have to do that within their probationary period, or they will not have the probationary period.
So they, they would do it after they're, they complete the academy, did you say?
Yes, they would be the academy, then their twelve-month probationary period starts, during that twelve months, they have to enter that certification program for their cardiac license, on their own time.
And is that practical, given their lacking schedules?
They can, they can make it happen. Other, other municipalities have it as opposed to employment, so, and a lot of the, the law has done, so, uh, I mean, if they want to keep their job, they will make it happen.
Okay, well, um, one more question.
All right, I want, if I could put a chair to, to Councilman Sykes, just to shed some light on this, uh, CCRI offers that, uh, program, and I know one of the instructors, I spoke to him about this, and they have it, Steve, so that they do accommodate the different departments at different times, they may have one evening where they'll do it, and they'll have one afternoon where they'll do it, so they do accommodate different, uh, different schedules.
Great, thank you. So they would have to have a regular car, a regular, uh, EMT?
Upon, yes.
Upon?
Yes, if they're supposed to get hired, you need to have a, basically, a hire.
To get hired, is that before the academy, or?
Yes, before the academy. They have that, when they get out of the academy, if you get out of the academy, you definitely have all the months to get there, and then to cardiac.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boris.
I just, I, um, this, I just want to let the members of, of the, um, the council know that this is still working progress, so again, this is something that, it's not a non-need-for-while, the mayor's an on-site, corporate thing, we're still a working group, and so we love to appoint what director, there's always something to ask, and I think that's why I thought this.
Susan has been telling us, um, everyone's more than welcome to come to the actual meetings. Um, one of the things that I did want to ask Dan, if possible, is that loan that we currently still have for the firefighters, will they still be able to take that as part of the, um, would you hire, can you still take that loan out, in the event that you just got hired in the fire department?
I, I.
We don't have the money to break up, so.
We will, we will, yeah, I would say we will fund the money for that loan, and make it through the next, yeah.
Yeah, at least have the conversation, so again, I think that both of you, for your time and your effort, I know this has not been, um, an easy summer, or the last few months, you know, with this, but I would like to, um, thank, uh, the police department as well, in helping us out with the surveys that are going out, and you can probably log away a little bit more on your report, I won't skip ahead, um, but I'm, you know, pretty, pretty excited, uh, to work with, with everyone in the commission.
Councilor President.
Thank you, Council President. Just as a follow-up to that, um, what is the fire department, is that going to, is that going to affect the fire department? Because from what I understand, everyone that's on duty has that, uh, certification, so will that, won't that affect manning, uh, the staffing, or dead?
That's a conversation you'd have to have in the union, so it's probably going to be something, uh, some aspects of that might have to negotiate, and they have to be, uh, a different process for that change, for, for, and they have that C, uh, so if that, that mean they have to write a intention, that's what, right, for the best, you know, that may change, uh, how they staff people, uh, without having that C, so that's a, that's probably a discussion of.
And one other question, if they fail to get that certification at the end of the year, does the city fire them, is that?
Yes, they, 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 they have a lot of probation, so they have no, uh, rights, uh, to, like, the, the, to, 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 to. And just so the Council President knows, every bond will be presented at that, uh, diversity training.
Excellent, I think you have something, uh, that, 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 at least one member of this department, we have the ratio likely training. And just so everyone knows, the ratio likely training was provided by Cranston, we received throughout, uh, and I'm not trying to go over the one Cranston condition, uh, direct training. Any other questions, Councilor President?
I just wanted to add something, uh, make a comment, to say that I commend this body, the leadership of Council President, the mayor's office, and Mayor himself, because this process of diversity, it's a very serious situation, it's something that we really have to tackle as a society, so I think that the first element that is very important is political will, and you can see that there's political will, and the elements have to work on regulations, and move forward, but I think we're, we're at the right step, you know, twenty nineteen, so it's time to change, thank you.
Thank you, Governor, for the diversity commission, I started with this, the idea was we get some people in a room with diverse backgrounds and diverse skill sets, talk about ways to make the hiring practices in the city better, hopefully we can continue and continue to work towards other issues that face the city, once we solve this one, so I do want to thank both directors for the work they've done, and remember, diversity commission, that's put the timing to actually work to solve this issue. This is not just checking the box for us, this is true, Director Fuhr said it's about political will, we have a political will to make sure that we drive diversity, so thank you very much. First order of business, Marquette Norton, Max Assessor, request for appraisal of forty-one Keith Avenue, and former Sanders School.
Thank you, Mr. President, the city is looking into selling that, uh, property, it's an old school, has been, uh, the school building, uh, so it gets back to the city, and, uh, the condition of that slot, it's used in the building of the city, so we, uh, that's to sell property, for the child, et cetera, and council, uh, for those, but that, by the way.
Did you, uh, Councilor, you certainly credit with this, uh, which we use to work?
Yes, they, 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 that, uh, that's what I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I'm.
Any other questions? Councilmember Boris.
I'm just curious, uh, to, uh, do it, Council President, once we do a praise, and you can determine that it's probably an asset itself, um, what is the actual process of settlement?
What's that number to determine, maybe, I repeat, uh, construct it, if we walk to the public, and at that point, call out the business committee, and it needs that requirement, and, uh, go to, uh, knowing it, and, 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 and.
Seeing none, per se, for all, you have executives engaging, for hiring, special council, et cetera, that, that, for shooting of all your hands, always, and to make sure none of your questions on it.
Yeah, I would like to.
Please, please, of course. Councilor Sykes?
Yeah, I'm sorry, do we have to vote on the appraisal? There was, yeah, we can vote on.
I don't think we vote on, I think we go on when we get to, uh, good, good, I think it's informational, but I'll let the lawyers, yeah, I can see that, yeah, they're voting against information.
All right, and could I just say that, that building is, that building is right next to a city park, and I think that, uh, request or proposal needs to somehow address that, so that, you know, if it is sold, it's appropriate to that park.
Yes, and I think, uh, our role is to somehow incorporate, uh, improving definition of that park, if we can somehow incorporate that, that whether he does take ownership of that property, uh, maybe willing to, uh, move space upon, or there, right here, so we can somehow incorporate that, you know, the people going to, um, but I don't know the exact ruling of that right now, how we're going to do that, but that's absolute, uh, incorporate the park into that, and we have a strategy of, of, of.
But, but the, what would be for sale is just the school building now at the park?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boris.
Yes, I want to, uh, uh, uh. It's also a plus value, and that's why I'm a part of the park, it's, uh, you know, you're, you're.
Additional questions? Seeing none, we have our executive vacations, four and nine, special hours, so, soon as the charter fifteen, uh, five, I have a report, any questions? Seeing no questions, so therefore, we need to, uh, close the additional executive paper, seeing none. Council President, I did have one more appointment to the charter review commission, I am appointing Matthew to lead, I appoint an executive for the tent, additionally, I think it's always good, we are being, to see a lot of students come in, uh, great, across the city, to help drive, partners operate, students, and, 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 secondly, you know, my father, that is a issue that I love, it's always good to see people are completely striving, to give awareness, uh, for these states that don't get enough time and effort, and those of these states are, are kind of, so, so, we all appreciate it, for coming out tonight, earlier in the meeting, yeah, very positive, positive, positive by all, and hopefully we can do that better. Moving on.
Very good. Judge, I just wanted to make mention that, when you see on the agendas, the, um, charter review commission, that all those meetings have a, a function to incorporate public comment, I know that Councilor Sykes, and Councilor, and, uh, Councilmember Boris, who are here, and we're planning on, perhaps taking this to different venues, you know, that a lot of people come to say balls, or, you know, set it up like more, like, individual voices, in, 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 if anyone has an idea, they have, do our whole twenty, and they want, or a good place to get a discussion on, uh, that would be great, thank you.
I think William will elaborate, and it would be a good location, I think that would be a lot of, a lot of people coming, additionally, potentially, I think the Cranston piece will be okay, you should think about what you said, kind of said, and what it's possible to say, so those who are board council members, would like to attend the meeting, so we should , uh, Boris, to see about, uh, the library, which it has, uh, a, a, an, an east toward the school, I think we can spread this out, have some, any different places, kind of read some of the mayor's, um, requirements, some of them are big changes to the charter, that, 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 along with the charter that we're out, so we want to hear from the public about some of these changes, and thank you, Attorney Richard Vaughn, for serving on the commission, uh, we do appreciate it, I know you're a busy, busy person in your personal life, and your business, and your family, and we will be so frustrated, our attorney, so thank you for, for working, and taking the lead on getting me scheduled to go up with public, you, 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 you. Councilmember Buke, Councilperson Sykes, you are first.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the first thing I just like to, uh, mention is, uh, on that issue of, when you sell property, uh, what needs to happen, I think if, if you look at, in the charter, uh, let me just look this up, three point oh eight, point oh four oh F, and it's, uh, uh, quite specific that it does have to go to, any sale of city property has to go to the retirement of debt or, I'm just trying to get it here quickly so I can read it, but it's, it's pretty clear. I say three point oh eight, oh four. Anyway, uh, I think, I'm just under, uh, your revenue, I'll look for it while I talk about something else, but it is in there. Uh, what I'm handing around is a, uh, is a report about the chemical fire that was in Cranston, that the administration, uh, Dan Thrill specifically provided for me, to me, uh, following the meeting we had about six weeks ago with the mayor, concerning the financial, uh, likely financial situation of the city in the last fiscal year, and how the chemicals fire on Elmwood Avenue had a major, uh, was a major hit to the city, both in terms of, of medical costs and, uh, backfilling fire positions for people who were out, due to what happened in that fire. And what I'm, uh, suggesting is, strongly suggesting, is that the city should, uh, look at getting money from Prossus, the company, for the fire, because according to this, Because according to this report from the, from N I O, which is the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health, there's a lot of responsibility for what happened on the company. This wasn't just a, you know, lightning struck the building or something. And if you look on the third page of what I handed out, under incident, you've got it there, Mark, it says, firefighters entered the building and found an active fire burning in a chemical disposal vat. It was unclear what was in the vat due to missing or incomplete labeling and inventory documentation. And then if you go to the next page, where it says, our key findings, it says that fire department determined it was an alkaline substance. However, we were not able to identify all chemicals that may have been present due to incomplete or missing chemical labeling of containers at Company A, and incomplete tier-two chemical inventory list from Company A, limited post-event sampling of residual solid and liquid remnants at Company A. So according to this, and I don't know any more than what's in here, you know, these guys, the firefighters, walk into this building, and there's a vat with chemicals on fire, and nobody knows what's in the vat. So that had major health consequences for the firefighters. And I think the company, the company screwed up. So from reading, going back and reading old newspaper articles on the fire, the article said two things that I thought were particularly interesting. One was that OSHA fined the company for poor record keeping after the fire. And the second was that the, the laborist, Chief McKenna, estimated that the city lost $150,000 of equipment in that, in that incident. So even separate from the medical bills and the overtime costs due to this fire, are the equipment costs that, right now, the taxpayers are being expected to pick up. And I don't think we should be picking up, we should be picking up those costs when the company clearly was negligent in its responsibilities to keep records, to label things. And there may be more details about their negligence, how the fires turned. So I did, at the meeting, six or seven weeks ago, suggest this course of act by the mayor. I don't know what the result of that suggestion was. And I would urge Mr. Perillo, Director Perillo, to pursue this and report back to the council on what's been considered.
Yes, a request from Congressman Spicke to review this report for the illustration that, of how you can track with the client.
I will. Briefly, I can speak to Solicitor Lawson, when this incident happened. I know we've been sending Prossus a letter to their attorney regarding, trying to get some reimpression from them. They denied any wrongdoing in that letter to us. And at that point, like you said, it became the city's ability to prove that it is on their part. And to this point, we don't believe we have enough evidence to go forward in a lawsuit against the company. We lost, like you said, $175,000 in equipment. It was $15,000 in overtime, just for that event itself. And we're into a couple of hundred thousand dollars in overtime and federal expenses. The only reimpression that we got, again, right now, we hope, is from the U P A, and that's limited to $25,000. So again, I'm determined, but I've been told that negligence in a situation like that is very difficult to prove by the city against a business. I'm sure this will help our case, but I mean, that's what I was advised by Solicitor Lawson.
So to the director, if we need to have an executive session next month, if you think this will be the avenue to exist, please look at and also we can schedule one. Moving on, we have Congressman Don.
Thank you. I know the mayor is still here. So regarding traffic being, I know that, you know, signs have been out. Last weekend, I was walking in the neighborhood behind, you know, school, there was a, there was a patrol, and then patrol officer there the entire time on auto, back out of field. I didn't see the flood, and I weren't, people were like, the traffic laws. But I know there's been more presence between signs, between patrol people out there. So I just want to say thank you to you all, to this department, and what you're doing to keep everyone safe over there. And, and that's, on that. Plastic production ordinance implementation, just trying to get a general idea of, you know, July 1st, 2020, rolling out the plastic production ordinance, how we're going to go about making businesses aware, you know, how are we going to roll out this new program, this new ordinance that's coming out?
I think we need to have a discussion on that. I think we really set down as an administration to say, okay, X, Y, and Z, and we want to get this place, but I need some kind of approval, or something, I think, to see how we're going to work out that. So that's a work in progress.
Do you, do you think the January council meeting, do you think two months? Is that, just to kind of get a update on where we're at?
Well, I think the first, I think that Google, if we identify who we want to be part of that process, that's the first step I make. Consequently, we want business owners, and who we want at that table deciding how we're going to propose. So I think that's a discussion we need to have, kind of offline, to see who the bodies are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, to the chair, moving in, you need to know the address of their free business in the city, it's a, damage, you have to go through the fact assessments, kind of pull them all out, and that may take just a month of this stuff. Congressman Rock.
Thank you, Congressman President. Being that province just implemented it, maybe we can pick their brain on how they went about notifying the businesses and the residents as well.
I do bet that money may set the pressure to the project, just put it out there. I don't see them spending, you know, money setting others. But I don't know, Congressman Rock.
Thank you, Mr. Congressman President. We have a website coming up online. We address it on social media. We get one, we order, you see the police, and the fire department to approve it. We get one, we order you online, and we, right now, and that may be enough to get help, get the word out.
I'll make a bid.
Congressman Segers.
Who, who exactly would be responsible for enforcing the ordinance? Would it be the department inspections, or the police?
I think initially, enforcement is what our goal is. I mean, penalty-wise, they have some information on, like, where they can no longer use plastic, but, I think it's going to be a city-wide effort. Obviously, police and inspection would be, would take a lead in that. But truth be, I haven't opened Z1s right now for July. So I can't really, give anyone that, sorry.
All right, Congressman Brereton, you all said, you all said. Congressman, if it's in it again, any, what was the form rating you had? Congressman Spicke, you got it?
No, I just wanted to correct something I said earlier about what happens with the sale of property. That is, it's not in the charter, it's in the ordinance. And the ordinance number is 3.08.040.
Thank you, Congressman. Congressman Morris.
Well, thank you. While I have the police department here, I just wanted to kind of, an F Y I, I was going to bring up the next public safety, but Race Street, which is our parking app, leaders have signed up, taken down. At some point, they're going to go back up, except, believe, there's a no parking section where the sign has either been faded or has been taken down. They're going to put it back up again. Not sure when, I think, Director May can consider it, but I just want to give you a heads, a heads up, in the event the sign does happen to pop up. The other thing that I do have, Congressman, I mean, is, none of the consequences, although none of this is, but is there any conversation going as far as the process for the clerk's position? Because I know the equipment is out this year, and I'd be very, very anxious on the city.
No one is, the process right now, and I can tell you, Pat and Maria are going out where a job restriction is. We're looking to post that in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, it's finished, you know, so we don't have a chance to touch things with her mind. But we're looking to create a job restriction, post a position externally. And the applicants, as they come in, she has, she'll say, maybe in January. I'm confident that even if she were to, still would be a gap at the point for a few months, that the current staffing in the, in the department can move forward. I have a meet with, some, some, some service to kind of talk about transition planning and things like that. So once we have a good idea, I can share it with you. We're trying to, just, unfortunately, she's not here to give me her lookups. But I will email tomorrow, since you, you know, we have a goal to make it over the transfer process. And we will take applications for review and decide who we want to bring in. I would say motion to send all the new businesses to the proper committee for it to do.
So moved.
I have a motion to a second, a discussion. Seen none, but please take the role of sending all the new businesses to the proper committees for it.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, there is, there is, we will say, this one, for test, 2009, we have, going back for, like, the last seven, I don't know if we want to see all of these here. Next month, the city council, next regular, we get you on Monday, November 1st and 5th, 2019, by the seat of all, after Halloween, I see this right over this range, and that has to be explained to the people. I mean, it is actually. Have a wonderful holiday, everyone, stay safe. Very self, and motion for.
So moved.
All right.